So we're ready to see her friendly amendment. Could you put it shared on the screen, please? The meeting is being re-adjourned? No, the meeting is being re- re-convened. Sorry. I take that back. Re-convened. Just can you just repeat yours? State your friendly amendment, please.
Yeah. So I have a few items. I think I would maybe I should go then one by one. The first two words mentioned earlier. Per housing element law, consider all public inputs received throughout the housing element process when drafting programs and policies. Second, identify the allocated RIN units plus a suggested 25% to 30% buffer, which Luke mentioned. I just want to be sure that's that's still the council's intention. And so do I?
Is that the only two?
Is that accepted?
You had more.
Yeah. Should I think should I make sure if this is accepted and then I go on?
Are you going to make more than one friendly amendment? Can you just make one friendly amendment?
You want them all together?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why.
I would like to add additional requirement for extremely low income because right now we don't have specific percentage for that. And prioritize housing for developmentally disabled, special needs people specifically in our priority system as requested by Venzorin to prioritize development disabled because the priority right now is not they don't get the priority with the scoring system right now. And preserve existing BMR units with potentially bond or grants to purchase those units. Consider those policies. And consider rental registration to assess the needs for vacancy tax. And expand the pre-approved ADU plans. Right now, I just checked our website. We don't have any. San Jose has 10. Explore multi-unit family under SB 9. So this might be already covered. I don't know. So so that we can use SB 9 to provide more middle-income housing. And incentivize for sale units to provide opportunities for people to build up equity to facilitate upward mobility. And geographically balance the units so that one side of the Cupertino is not more privileged than the other side with more bigger units and higher household income. And then evenly distributed density would also allow us to develop transit throughout the city. Preserve retail square footage in commercial centers so that we can people can shop locally and generate the much-needed revenue and also reduce traffic to other cities for sustainability purpose. And then, yeah, I think for now that's I think the others likely won't be accepted. So, yeah, so that's so far. Yeah.
Okay. So a couple of things. One, I like most of these. The issue here is that I am trying to give staff flexibility to work with the consultant. The consultant is frankly, I think, the best regarded in the state and certainly by HCD. They are very used to working with them. I deliberately did not include a whole host of things that I originally intended to because that was the intent, to give staff flexibility and not tie their hands. So I'm going to decline to accept this one at present, not because I disagree with these per se, but because I think in fairness to everybody, I don't want them as part of the motion at present. I do, however, want to see staff take these ideas on board and collect them as the feedback that was intended for today's session.
Can we just include the first two items to clarify?
Mayor, through the mayor. So I believe we have a motion on the table. I believe Councilmember Moore still has time left. I don't believe any of the other council members do.
Can I have a modified friendly amendment given the feedback? So I reduce the scope.
That's at the discretion of the mayor. You've used your time.
So let me let me get this right. So you made this friendly amendment and Councilmember Frum rejected. Well, the second one, I can't do anything about it either. Councilmember Moore, do you want to say anything? Yes, you do.
Wait. Procedure point of order.
Let Councilmember.
Do I have the right to propose supplemental amendment or does that need the agreement of the mayor?
You've used your.
Per parliamentary procedure, I have a right. I don't need the mayor to agree, to allow me to propose.
Per the rules of procedure, you have five minutes to deliberate. You have used that time up, so it's up to the mayor to allow additions.
Deliberate, not for proposing.
The motion has already been made.
Let's have Councilmember Moore.
Not friendly amendment.
Yeah, so you've used your time, so it's up to the mayor to decide whether to recognize you. Councilmember Moore, on the other hand, has not, so she has a right to speak.
I'm going to let Councilmember make her comments first. How's that?
Will I have a timer? Okay.
Three minutes.
Okay, thank you. First question, it's unclear to me. Our the study session recommended action is to provide policy direction. I would like a real quick answer. It appears that the policy direction is from a letter provided by Cupertino for all yesterday afternoon. Is that the policy direction? It is unclear to me. Could someone please provide a yes or a no? Through the mayor.
Through the mayor.
It is worded as follows. Collect all input from letters and comments submitted from today's meeting, especially the calls for an ambitious housing element, and examine the suggested policies, programs, and concerns for analysis and potential inclusion in the revised draft.
Through the mayor, that's not a very clear answer. I'd like to have the city attorney respond because I suggested a few things throughout this meeting. I have no idea if those are being collected or not.
So I would suggest that if you have specific issues that you'd like to see addressed, that you could you could consider a friendly amendment to Councilmember Frum's motion.
Through the mayor, we've already seen Councilmember Chow attempt to add, and it was declined. So it sounds like we're playing a game of try it and see if one council member will agree with what you suggested. So as a procedure for collecting policy direction, I would have preferred that this meeting be conducted differently where a collection of policy ideas were presented before the council. We had about four or five that were suggested in the presentation, and I said that I appreciated them. And I offered some up as well with regards to transitional housing. So I'm I the policy direction I would suggest here would be that we have another meeting and that the collection of policies that have been suggested are brought back and we actually have a deliberation rather than the way that this is working out, which is really dominated by one individual rather than having a collective deliberation and having comments from the public. This is it's not working out as a group exercise and it's it's just not working out. We're not getting to hear from the council members. We're not getting to hear from the public what they think about various policies. It's very dominated and anyway, I can't support this this motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. And so we have a motion. We have a second, and I think Councilmember Chow would like to make a friendly amendment.
Thank you. Yeah. So I would reduce the scope, but actually I will support the motion with this clarification, actually. So above, this is proposed motion, and I think it's clear. It just says collect all input and examine the suggested policies. Doesn't mean agreeing with all of them. And my additional amendment is, as I stated earlier, these two items are the same. Per housing element law, consider all public inputs received throughout the housing element process when drafting programs and policies. Identify the allocated housing element, the RIN units plus the suggested 25% to 30% buffer. And consider in I added one more. Consider inputs from all council members provided at this meeting for programs and policies. That's my friendly amendment. I actually like that Councilmember Frum drafted pretty general in your motion. Just want to clarify. Thank you.
The first two look like they are already reflected in law. The last reflects part of the motion as it is, but I will accept them both.
Are you accepting all three?
Yes, all three.
Okay. I will accept that friendly amendment, too. So we have a motion and a friendly amendment.
Thank you.
And do we have other discussions? Because the time is off unless you have real, you know.
Mayor, are you are you extending the time for discussion? I believe everybody's used their time.
I'm asking my councilman, unless you have something different to say, I think I would like to entertain a vote first. If it doesn't go through, then we can. Okay, you know what? Everybody gets one more minute to say things there. Councilmember Moore, as is her fans of the ending vice mayor Chow. Vice Mayor Mohan.
So through the mayor, there was a question about impact fees and the importance of making sure that the impact fees are kept up to date, and that that is something that we should be looking into. I don't know that that qualifies as a policy, but that should be addressed. Also, I want to clarify that all of the comments, as Councilmember Chow has has added on, that all of the comments made by the council members are going to be included. And I do hope that that is going to include the comments made by members of the public because not everyone feels the same way about these policies. So I hope it isn't just the council members, but all of the public who came here and provided their comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Mohan, please.
No, I'm going to be brief. I think I agree with Councilmember Moore that all public comments made today or that you received will be considered in your response to HCD. And I think the motion reflects that. Thank you.
Councilmember Chow?
Two more things I didn't think I would get support, so I didn't propose in earlier in the friendly amendment. I don't think we should reduce impact fees since the city will need to provide services to addition 25% more residents in eight years. And to mitigate the impact of all the developments, we need those funding. And no reduction in parking space since families and seniors do not have other alternatives. Given the lack of transit options in Cupertino, the reality won't change in the next eight years or 20 years. And I would like us to prioritize and consider innovative housing structures like micro-units and share the intergenerational housing models. This I borrowed from the Palo Alto Housing Element. Thank you.
Are you making a friendly amendment?
No, I'm just putting this into record since that's part of the motion. I think the motion also include all public comments.
So you're not making a friendly amendment?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Through the mayor, if I can ask for a point of clarification. The purpose of today's session is to receive input and to receive feedback. What I would like to clarify is that staff definitely is going to take all points that have been raised by members of the public and council members and consider them as appropriate. I hope this council understand that we're not going to be able to incorporate all of the comments and the points that has been raised today into the housing element. As you can figure, some of them are conflicting with one another. But I believe that staff and consultant will use our judgment and our discussion to consider all of the points that has been raised today and incorporate that into the revised draft. Just want to make that point of clarification.
Absolutely. I hear that. So we have a motion, a second. Councilmember Frum, you want to make a one-minute comment?
I will make a super quick comment, which is just a thank you to staff for working through this with everyone and a thank you to everyone in the public who made comments. I know that there were a lot of you tonight, both here and on Zoom, and your participation matters. Thank you.
I'm going to use my one minute to say a few my personal observations. I understand this community cares about our housing elements. We like city manager says we have conflicting ideals and or how this should go through. I trust our staff, working with our consultant, is going to come up with a compliant compliance and also a housing element that going to bring Cupertino into the future. When I was elected mayor, I made a very short speech that we're here for our current residents, for our date residents, and for our future residents. And our housing elements reflects that. So I'm going to trust our staff to take all the comments. I know you can't put everything into your housing element, but you're going to do your best with our very fine consultants to come up with a housing element so that our city can have a reputation that we are taking care of residents all three levels. So thank you. That's my comment. And I do believe Councilmember Moore has already used your one minute, so I am going to ask for a vote of the current current motion that's made by Councilmember Frum with a friendly amendment from Councilmember Chow and second by me with the friendly amendment.
And a friendly amendment from you.
That's true. I totally forgot about that. Okay. Okay, so with friendly amendment from me first and then friendly amendment of Councilmember Chow is accepted by the original motion, council member, and also second by me. So let's vote by light, please.
The motion as amended carries with more voting no.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
Pardon me abstaining. More abstaining.
Okay, let's move. We don't need a break, right? Because we just had a break. Let's move to action number, the second action item. Consider taking a position in support or in opposition or otherwise regarding Senate Bill SB 423, streamline housing approvals, multifamily housing developments. Do we have a staff report on this?
Mayor, members of council, thank you. I don't have a presentation, but I will have I will briefly introduce the item and then turn it over to council for questions and public comment and deliberations. So the item before council is is to consider taking a position of supportive in opposition to or otherwise regarding Senate Bill 423, which is streamlined housing approvals for multifamily housing developments. So SB 423 would amend SB 35. SB 35 is a law that I think everybody here is familiar with. It was passed by the legislature in 2017 and signed by the governor. SB 35 requires local government agencies that do not satisfy their share of the regional housing needs assessment for specified income categories to approve applications for certain housing development projects ministerially if the project satisfies objective planning standards and and the applicant provides a specified share of affordable housing units in the project. As a result, the law preempts local discretionary land use authority and eliminates secret review for qualifying housing development projects. Currently, SB 35 is scheduled to sunset in 2026. SB 423 extends the sunset date of SB 35 to January 1, 2036. It also makes substantive amendments to SB 35 as it's currently amended, which are outlined in the staff report, and I can answer any questions you have about those. So as noted in the staff report, the League of Cities has requested that member cities oppose SB 423 because it's a top-down, one-size-fits-all legislation, according to the League of Cities, that overrides local control and allows the approval of housing development projects without opportunities for public input. A significant number of California cities, including in Santa Clara County, the city of Palo Alto, have taken positions to oppose the bill. There are several cities that have taken position in support as well as numerous elected officials. A complete list of organizations that support and oppose the bill is provided in the bill summary, which is Attachment B. So council can by majority vote, vote to support or oppose SB 423. It could also choose to take take no position, in which case no action would be required. With that, I'm available for any questions.
And questions from the council? If not, may I ask, City Attorney Jensen, this bill is still in the process of going through, right? And are we expecting more amendments from this bill or we're not sure?
I would I say we're not sure, but that's certainly possible, yes. It's 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 still it was passed out of committee but is still in the legislative process.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Mohan, please.
Yeah, through the mayor. I had one quick question. It's not really an straightforward extension of SB 35, is it?
As I noted, it's an extension with some substantive amendments that are made to the bill. Those are those are listed in the staff report, and we can go through those if you have any questions about them.
If there are no questions from council members, I'd like to open up a public comment, please.
Yes, Mayor, we have two requests to speak from in Community Hall, and I see three hands, four hands raised on Zoom. Just a reminder, please have your hands raised in the next nine minutes or a cost of speak card submitted from Community Hall. We have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jennifer.
As I said previously, my mother's home is sitting in direct conflict with this bill. I've spent the last two weeks contacting the county of Santa Cruz, the city of Santa Cruz, her Board of Supervisors, her assembly member who is on the Natural Resources Committee, and also an adjacent assembly member who is on the sorry, I think it's the it's the committee that it's at now, sustainability. No, that's the wrong word. It's the whether the state has to pay money. I forgot what the word is called. I've had more information about this bill than ever I thought I would. I know it inside and out. Senator Weiner is not backing down. The same people that brought us AB 2011 are bringing us this bill. I will say again that Senator Weiner and Buffy Wicks and Yimby and Mr. Grayson are not qualified to be making decisions about what happens with the Coastal Commission. They are they may be attorneys, which is wonderful, but none of them are trained scientifically. And no one has said yet who the person was that they relied on to get the information about why we should build in coastal areas. Also Gavin Newsom, as one of his responsibilities as the governor, is to nominate people to the 12-member Coastal Commission. If Gavin Newsom is forced to decide whether he's going to sign this bill or not, he is in conflict of his duties. I do not believe that this bill, including the Coastal Commission, is legal. It is completely contradicting the Coastal Commission from 1976, which was put in by statewide initiative people voting. My parents were very involved in this. I could not vote at the time, but it made a big impact on them. They were always concerned about keeping the coastal areas pristine, and there have been horrible examples of building in areas on the coast that are dangerous. Florida, we had a whole building collapse because nobody paid attention. It was on the coast. They lost 200 people. If Senator Weiner wants to have this bill through, take out the references to the Coastal Commission. We will deal with the SB 35 fallout. But I do believe that he will have to release the Coastal Commission references to get it through. I have been assured there will be a fight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Wei, Vice Mayor Mohan, and council members. My name is Jean Bedord, and I'm resident of Cupertino. My initial reaction to this bill was that it should be supported. Enacted in 2018, it's scheduled to sunset in 2026, and that includes three years of the pandemic. It's also been successful in breaking the logjam in housing production, so extending it seemed to make sense. Well, one of my concerns with the original bill was the rigidity of the requirements to qualify. There were two tiers, one at 10% and one at 50%, which seemed arbitrary at the time and more so in today's economically challenging time for home builders. These remain the same. During that time period, additional housing bills have been enacted. Several projects have been approved using the density bonus law. There's also been SB 9, SB 330, ADU laws, and others to address housing. So perhaps there isn't as great a need for SB 35. I was expecting the bill to be a straightforward extension. However, in reading the actual bill as presented in the communications, the sheer number of amendments concern me. In particular, the modifications in specified construction labor requirements, as well as the issue raised about consistency with the city's climate action plan concern me. At this point, I question supporting SB 423 in its current form, particularly as it would apply to Cupertino. If amended, it could possibly be supported, but modifications and amendments are a moving target. Perhaps a neutral position is better. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. And we have a card from Neil Park McLintock. Welcome, Neil.
Hello. I wanted to speak in support of SB 423, which is both a critical tool for housing affordability and also for the environment. And I'll also try to address some of the concerns as well that have been brought up. So just to speak to the success of SB 35, which has, you know, invited controversy in Cupertino but across the state, has produced more than 20,000 below-market-rate homes. When you think about what's actually effective from Sacramento, and you know, there is some criticism of SB 9, for example, is it working, is it not? SB 35 has been working. It's been producing below-market-rate homes across the entire state, and it's been one of the most effective tools that we do have as well. It's also created a lot of jobs as well, over 15,000 construction jobs. In terms of affordability metrics, too, 9,000-plus of those have been low-income homes and over 5,500 very-low-income homes. Now, with regard to the environmental concerns, SB 423 also has open space and sensitive habitat protections as well and also has specific rules when it comes to building on wetlands as well. It can't be you can't use it to build housing on wetlands unless the development in the wetlands has been authorized by a permit or other approved issued pursuant to federal or state law. And it also takes into account risk of wildfire. In terms of coastal zones, there are actually a lot of really well-off communities across California on coastal zones that already have housing on them. This increases access for people to be able to enjoy coastal zones, to live there, and those communities can also be more sustainable, too. And so while, you know, appreciating the positions that have been held by the Coastal Commission and the League, at the same time, this bill actually does have a host of different environmental protections that are taken into consideration, too. If you don't take a support position, I would ask that you take no position on the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. And we will now move to our speakers on Zoom. We have six hands raised. Sean Hughes, Kamyaab, Mashen, Peggy Griffin. So we'll start with Sean. Welcome, Sean.
Thank you. Speaking for myself, I highly encourage the council to take a support or at the very least no position on SB 423. A no position bears no more risks to Cupertino, but a supporting position reaffirms our city's commitment to working towards better housing outcomes in good faith and is consistent with our climate action plan and climate emergency declaration. Taking an opposing position on one of the single most successful housing laws in recent years would be extremely disappointing and a confounding choice. Please consider that in recent bills, there have been no other recent bills that have produced as many homes as this one in California. Contemplate what opposition to this bill would signal to HED as we try to get another draft element past their supervision. And to reiterate a point made in the staff report, opposing SB 423 And to reiterate a point made in the staff report, opposing SB 423 is likely in direct opposition to our goals that are stated in the city's adopted climate action plan. Opposition arguments fail to understand what is even in the bill itself, especially in regard to coastal references, and have no answer or actual suggestion for what would be a better alternative to address exclusive communities, blocking opportunities for housing in areas that have already been built. For the sake of our community needs, building homes for our future, and doing all we can to fight climate change, please take a supporting position or no action at all on this agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Next, we have Kamyaab Mashin, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Ryan Globus. Welcome, Kamyaab.
Good evening, council and staff. I would also like to urge you to support this bill, or at least take no position on it. I think there are a lot, there are a lot of pieces of housing legislation that have been coming through the state recently, and, and many of those take away control from municipalities, cities like Cupertino, and end up overriding their zoning and their land use decisions. And I think while sometimes these are necessary, I can't really fault any of you as elected leaders of a city for opposing them. But, but this bill isn't one of those. This bill essentially just streamlines the approval process for housing that is already conforming with the zoning that exists in a city, with the zoning that you have established for a particular area. All it does is it streamlines that process and prevents these projects from getting bogged down in endless hearings and approvals. It just makes a ministerial process, and it speeds up what we need to create housing. Beyond that, I would really just echo the comments that have already been said. This has been an effective, SB 35 has been an effective piece of legislation, the most effective piece of housing legislation in, from the past decade, and I would urge you to support it, or at least take no position on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kamyaab. Next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Ryan Globus, followed by Shivani Cavuluru. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, City Council and staff. This bill is more than just an extension of the existing SB 35. As Jean Bedord mentioned, she and I actually agree that there are serious concerns. It does not, she doesn't support it in its existing state. California cities doesn't support it. I don't support it. I'm asking you to oppose SB 423, to actually stand up and speak out against it. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Ryan Globus, followed by Shivani Cavuluru, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Ryan.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Ryan Globus, and I'm calling tonight to ask you to support SB 423 or take a neutral stance. I won't repeat what the, what the earlier callers have said. I'll just add that this bill has unlocked a lot, or SB 35, I should say, has unlocked a lot of affordable housing in the state, which has really helped with the housing crisis. I'll also add that I, I live in a market-rate house, but across the street from me, a couple affordable housing complexes went up, five or six stories each, about 100 units each, and it's a lovely addition to the neighborhood. It's not that scary, and I hope that this bill can unlock more of that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ryan. Next, we have Shivani Cavuluru, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Shivani.
Hello, and thank you, everyone, for your time and patience today to the staff and the council. My name is Shivani Cavuluru, and I want to express vocal support for SB 423, and just want to quickly remind everyone that this isn't something that's random or scary, and that it must be implemented only in a city or county that is currently already not meeting their state-manded housing. And I do hope that we can challenge some of our classist impulses that do tend to pop up when it comes to coastal regions. I think Carmel is a particularly poignant example. We want to make affordable housing, not just in cities all around us, but even in places that have been predominantly for wealthy and upper-class folks, because we want to desegregate these neighborhoods. I also want to center your attention to the immense amount of union support SB 423 is getting as well, including other environmental organizations. I encourage this council not to overthink a support position, because it should not be radical to simply say that you, as city leaders, in general, welcome affordable and environmentally sound housing. If I, a solo resident, say I oppose something, my reach is exponentially smaller than yours as a council. You cannot, especially after all the hard work your staff, community, and yourselves have put to make Cupertino livable, suddenly opposing it is going to send a cataclysmic negative message that you probably don't want to give out yourselves, saying that you don't support affordable housing. Like my peers tonight, I urge you to take a supportive stance or a no stance, because a negative stance will be a misplaced overreaction to an issue that can be addressed and resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Shivani. And we have Lisa Warren as our final speaker. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So I hope that at least the majority of council will vote to oppose this bill, and reasons are similar to Jean Bedord's comments, Peggy Griffin's comments. And I also want to point out that, you know, if SB 35 has been doing such a great job as, not even as originally written, this is a bill that has been written and rewritten and amended and amended as it moved along, and in many ways, in many times, saved the butts of the developers weren't producing what they said they would, and to then say that the bill is currently working as amended several times already, why would it not just be extended if it was that successful and extended without further amendments? It's just, it's not good governance, in my opinion, to begin with, to be proposed that way, especially since it's been such a contentious bill from the beginning. And not every SB 35 project is a success story, I promise you that. There's, yeah. Go look on Cox Road in Saratoga and see what's happening there, and, and what's going to come of that project. How many affordable units? How many people will be housed amongst the luxury? So if I were to be up there voting, I would certainly vote, if not oppose, definitely oppose with amendments, but that's a slippery slope, because that doesn't really state what I think should be stated. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and thanks for all the comment. I'm going to close the public comment period and bring you back for council for discussion. The council members have five minutes to express your opinions and, and discussion on SB 423. Go ahead, Councilmember Chow.
I have a question, though. So the labor agreement that changed the, that, is that retroactive, or that apply to VAALCO? But that's over 85 feet.
So the project, the, 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 the VAALCO project would, you know, would not change the conditions of approval of the VAALCO project by itself?
Hmm, but during the construction, previous SB 35 require, I think, fair wage, what's that term?
Prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage, yeah, the prevailing wage. But then I think this one loosened our requirement, something about if it's under 85, it's only the one, the floors that's over 85 would apply, or I'm confused on that.
Yeah, there, there, there are, yeah, there are complicated changes to the, the labor requirements. I, I wouldn't think that they would be retroactive.
Okay, that's good to know. Oh, so do we make comment? So, yeah, I, I'm very concerned that there is the blanket removal of the coastal zone exclusion, because as we know, we, if, if there is no, it's very concerning. Oh, actually, another question. Could this be combined with AB 2011? So a site that's qualified under AB 2011, can they apply SB 35, then get streamlined?
That's a good question that I don't have the answer to right now.
Okay. Yeah, I think the streamlining, it's a good, initially, I also thought the bill is a good idea, because projects still need to comply with objective standards, and the issue with VAALCO is that there was no objective standard on the site. As a result, we end up with a gigantic project. So it's not a result of the bill specifically. It's really the previous council refused to set objective standards on that site. But then the, the other additional changes in this bill, I'm not so sure, yeah.
Councilmember Foo?
Yeah, this is just more a, a point for Councilmember Chow with respect to stacking SB 35 on AB 2011. AB 2011 is already a ministerial process.
Any other comments from council? Councilmember Moore, please.
Thank you. So my concern with SB 423 is, is any extension of SB 35, and, and there are a couple of modifications that I would like to see to SB 35. And one is, is coming out of the SEQA statutes and guidelines, and it's 21083 where they state, under subdivision D, "The guidelines shall include criteria for public agencies to use in determining when a proposed project is of sufficient statewide, regional, or area-wide environmental significance that a draft environmental impact report, a proposed negative declaration, or a proposed mitigated negative declaration shall be submitted to appropriate state agencies." And I'll just zip over to the guidelines so you can get the sense of what projects are considered of statewide, regional, or area-wide significance. That is under 15206 subdivision B 2. "A project has the potential for causing significant effects on the environment extending beyond the city or county in which the project would be located." And I'll just move to the size. "Projects subject to this subdivision include a proposed residential development of more than 500 dwelling units, a proposed shopping center or business establishment employing more than 1,000 persons, or encompassing more than 500,000 square feet of floor space, a proposed commercial office building employing more than 1,000 persons, or encompassing more than 250,000 square feet of floor space." And I'll leave it at that. When the, the VAALCO project had been approved, someone had said to me years ago that this project was so big, it really should not have been approved. And if you look in, in the SEQA statutes and guidelines, I think that it would be pretty simple to have the addition of these sizes put into the, the project, I'm sorry, to put into the statute, so that we don't have projects of statewide, regional, or area-wide significance getting ministerially approved. That's the first amendment I would like to see taken up about that law. And the next one is regarding counting square feet of parking garages as though it's residential square footage. And I would suggest that no parking garages, I don't care if they're underground, I don't care if they're above ground, that they are not going to be counted, and I would like to see that modification to the law. What happens when, in, in describing our VAALCO project, when you have above-ground residential parking over a million square feet, and then the way the law was modified was that underground parking, and it was over 3 million square feet of underground parking, was not counted? Because the law has a 2/3s residential requirement, it was allowed for the parking garages, they were over a million square feet, to be counted as though they were actual apartments. So people wondered, how is it that VAALCO ended up using a housing law to worsen the housing shortage? Well, it's because of a deficiency, a defect in the law, where you're allowed to count all that square footage of parking garages, though those were actual residential units. Now, I've heard people say that, you know, it's done, SB 35's done a great job adding housing, and there are really good projects, which you can just look at it, you see there's, you know, six stories, five stories of residential units, there's retail on the bottom. You can just look at it, and you can tell you're looking at something that's at least 2/3s residential. When you're looking at how the math can be skewed, as we see at VAALCO, you end up with 1.9 million square feet of office space, and then another over 400,000 square feet of retail, and then we only had 2,402 residential units, around 260,000, I'm sorry, about 2.3 million square feet versus the, the other totals. So it didn't, it didn't actually work out, when you're looking at the actual units, to be the 2/3s. So these two modifications, one, I think it would help prevent a lot of heartache for a lot of cities, to put the size constraints of area-wide and statewide and regional significance, just pull that code right out of SEQA, put it into, put it into the SB 35 law, and then clarify that you can't count parking garages as though that is where people live, because that doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. So I am going to repeat my first question, that is, this bill is still being amended going through, or could get amended going through the, the law process, right?
Yeah, I, I believe it was re-refered to the Appropriations Committee.
Back. I'm more inclined to watch it, to keep a watch on the bill, and have it come back when it's in its definite form. And I do have to tend to agree with Jennifer Griffin that I do not let that coastal region in the bill, and I cannot, in my conscience, support it now with that in it. So I like to keep a watch on it. Would the City Attorney's Office be able to keep a track on it and keep us informed?
Yes, of course.
Okay, so that's the position I would take. I would not take any actions on it. And I do sort of agree with Councilmember Chow. Our VAALCO project was one of a kind that because there wasn't, there wasn't a height or a, a limit on office space, I think somehow we're, we're wearing a disadvantage on that. And I have to agree with some public comments that SB 35 did produce some very needed low-income housing. I don't think it's a terrible bill to start with. I, I just can't imagine coastal regions have to, you know, deal with that. I am very protective of our coastal regions, and I do believe that with all the climate action, with all the rising, sea level rising, we need to really pay attention to that. And I see that the coastal region commissions are, are opposing it, so I would like to take a position to watch and let City Council, let City Manager, no, City Attorney's Office keep us updated when the bill comes through it. That, that's my comment. I have Councilmember Chow, Councilmember Moore actually used all your time. Councilmember Chow, you have two minutes.
Okay. So I looked up AB 2011, so it still required prevailing wage, and it's a ministerial, and I think it's 20% affordable, right? So if someone applied 2011 on plus SB 35, they only need 10% affordability if the city did not meet the goal yet. And then also, they don't, they need a weaker prevailing wage requirement, right?
So, you see, so, so, yes, AB 2011 is So, you see, so, yes, AB 2011 is a ministerial and also has a prevailing wage requirement. I'm not sure that that's the level of affordability in AB 2011. I still not sure that I could answer, sitting here, how the two statutes would play together.
Yeah. So it seems we have many other housing bills that have passed. My most concerning is SB 35. It's only require 10% affordable. That's even lower than our BMR, 15% and 20% for sale unit. So the affordability requirement is too low for a streamlined project, and that needs to be changed. So I think we have to take a strong position to oppose it, because this is going to extend it for another 10 years. The legislators should come back, revise it with a better bill next time.
Thank you, council member Chow. I think that's your time, while you have 30 seconds left. Council member Foo and vice mayor Mohan, would you like to, council member Foo, you go first, vice mayor Mohan after council member Foo.
Sure.
So, you know, I'll echo a lot of the commentary that came from the public with regard to how productive SB 35 has been. It's certainly the most productive affordable housing legislation that the state has seen since the dissolution of redevelopment, and I think it would be a colossal act of bad faith for us to oppose the bill. I think that it would be valuable for all of my colleagues to reread it. The bill, even in its current form, would still allow us to maintain our current BMR maximum of 15%. That remains in the bill, it has never changed. There are some differences that would allow the SB 35, as amended through this bill, to access LITC funding more easily, but that is not the same thing as saying that all of the sudden, we can only impose a 10% requirement. You know, to give some idea of how this would be taken in Sacramento, and I think that it's important for us to take seriously what our messages mean there, I'd direct everyone back to previous attempts at amending this legislation, and in particular, AB 1174, which passed last year, and was directed specifically at Cupertino's activities with relation to SB 35. And I would direct you to pages four and five of the Senate Local Governance Finance Committee's analysis of that bill, and it reads as follows. "The city of Cupertino has consistently identified what it considers to be loopholes in SB 35 to slow down or attempt to halt the project," the project being Valco. "For example, they have imposed new conditions, balked at minor modifications, and attempted to withhold permits for excavation and encroachment after the project's approval. So far, they have been successful in delaying the project for almost three years, to the point where Valco's SB 35 approval is about to expire prior to the commencement of construction. The Valco developer, San Hill Properties, and other advocates have returned to the legislature in every year following the passage of SB 35 to revise its provisions in an attempt to head off the city's efforts, spending significant time and resources. San Hill explains that their intent with AB 1174 is to avoid litigation, but local governments are a crafty bunch, and Cupertino will likely find additional ways to hold up Valco even if the changes in AB 1174 occur. Furthermore, SB 35 already prohibits a local government's review and issuance of subsequent permits from, quote, 'inhibiting, chilling, or in any way precluding the development,' end quote. Cupertino's actions seem clearly intended to delay the project. Litigation may be the only way to ensure that Valco is successfully constructed." This is who we are to Sacramento, and our reputation needs to change. We don't change it by opposing this bill.
Vice mayor Mohan, I think you have your lights up a second.
I'll be very brief, Mayor Way. I'm concerned about the timing of this bill. We are talking about the housing element, and it wasn't clear that there'd be unintended consequences to approving or not approving SB 423. I'm also conflicted with the language about the prevailing wage. I'm not sure how the final version will come out. So my position is to not take a position. Thank you.
Okay. Council member Moore, you have used your five minutes, so I'm going to go to council member Chow, you have 30 seconds.
So things written in a bill analysis doesn't mean it's all true. What was quoted there is inaccurate. The city did not need to put any barrier to Valco project, and apparently, they have hired the lobbies to put such paragraph in the bill analysis. And they have, they were involved in promoting some loopholes included in the original SB 35, too.
I think we have made our points very clear. I think council member Foo, you do have a couple minutes, if you'd like to make use of it.
Yes, those are all very interesting claims. They are all totally irrelevant, because our reputation is, in Sacramento, what it is, and we will do ourselves no favors by opposing the bill.
So I do believe that our council members have made our position pretty clear, and so I am going to take a straw vote of what we want to do, just to go ahead and so we can get a feeling of it. Why don't we start from council member Moore? What is your proposal? A very simple straw vote. Oppose, approve, amendment, or whatever you want to propose, not elaborating your positions, because we're...
May I suggest that procedurally, I think it would be more appropriate, at this point, for you to either request a motion, or if your, if the intent of your comments was to table this item, to either request a motion or make a motion to table the item.
Okay, so a straw vote, apparently, is not as clear, so I would entertain a motion then. Do we, somebody wants to make a motion? Well, I will make a motion that we not vote only today and instruct the city attorney's office to take a watch position and inform us.
Right, so, okay, so I would suggest that you move to table the item, and the city attorney's office will continue to...
Okay, I move to table the item, and have the city attorney's office to keep us informed. Is that good? Okay, so I need a second.
I'll second it.
I made a motion, seconded by council vice mayor Mohan, and I'm open for discussions. Council member Moore?
Council mayor Way, that motion to table is not debatable.
Oh.
Vote.
Oh, okay.
You can withdraw your motion, if you wish.
No, I'm not withdrawing my motion, so, and I'm calling for vote, then, I do think, council member Chow, might I want you to explain that a little bit?
It's not debatable.
Okay, thank you. So I would entertain a vote by light, please. The motion is to table it.
Motion carries with Chow and Moore voting no.
I must admit that I'm in a learning mode every day, so I would need to learn more rubber's procedures. So that concludes this item, and I'm calling for adjournment at 9:31 PM.